On Saturday, June 17th, the unthinkable occurred in our area. What we have seen on TV and thinking that would never happen tragically did. Trooper Jacques Ruffier gave the ultimate sacrifice and Lieutenant James Wagner was also shot and is still in critical condition. On a personal note, Lieutenant Wagner's middle son played baseball at Hickton High School with my grandson, so I would see him at the ballgames quite frequently. I've spoken with several residents of Juniata County and with heavy hearts, and they feel their lives will never be quite the same, and I can see why. Our hearts of prayers go out to all those who were involved. A lot of troopers in the Lewestown Barracks live in Mifflin County. In fact, several of them actually started their police career with our department. I'm working with Mifflin Town's Mayor, Roxanne McGinnis, and our Borough Council to develop a tribute from our borough and county, and I hope that I have all of your support. This is a time for us to give of ourselves honoring those who protect us. Several years ago, I was presented a policeman's prayer that I'd like to share with you all. "Lord bless the ones who wear the badge, the ones who walk the beat. Protect and keep them safe while they are on the street. As they wait and as they watch, doing good for all. Guide their minds and give them strength for each and every call. Ready to put their lives on the line, give them courage each day. Let them know you're always there in each and every way. So bless the ones who wear the badge. Protect them from harm. Always keep them safe and in your loving arms." Chief, would you like to also speak?
Just like to take a few minutes to recognize, as the mayor said, the sacrifice and the courage of Trooper Rugeau, Lieutenant Wagner of Pennsylvania State Police. During their incident that occurred in Juniata County on the 17th of June, Trooper Rugeau was killed in one of these, and Lieutenant Wagner was critically wounded and remains in the hospital today. Many of your colleagues were deeply affected by those tragedies as well. Please continue to keep these officers and their families in repairs. Each day, all the officers leave their families behind, not knowing what the day will bring or if they will even return them. They're willing to put themselves between those who have committed evil acts and the innocent citizens they protect. Trooper Rugeau and Lieutenant Wagner demonstrated this commitment on that day, as well as all the other responding officers, who ultimately stopped the suspect from inflicting further harm on the community. Please take a moment to reflect on their sacrifice and know that all police officers share in that same commitment to protect the communities, and they deserve your respect and support as well. Thank you.
Roll call.
Nelson Reeveney.
Here.
Robert Hammond.
Here.
Larry Seer.
Here.
Venus Shade. Jim Steele.
Here.
Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Anybody here in the audience need one to say anything right before council? Approval or consent agenda? See it here.
I make a motion to approve.
Consent agenda.
Check. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to turn it over to the Borough Manager.
Good afternoon, everybody. First thing is the Rec Park Community Pool, the Rec Park Pool Study. That is all signed and approved, and through us, DCR, DCNR, and the Aquatics Company that's going to do the study, contacted them today. They will be here in the next one to two weeks to do their initial assessment of the pool during operating hours, and I'll keep you informed as you move along with that study. Streetsweeper is still waiting for repairs. This is under my reports, but I'm going to have to change it to a vote. Did some research today, called the company that is repairing it, and there's two quotes out there, one for $3,000-some that the insurance company says they will be responsible for, and one for about $17,000 that they're saying, "We are responsible for." What doesn't make sense is the damaged parts that they're saying, "We are responsible for." We probably shouldn't be responsible for that, because of the result of the accident. It's a new streetsweeper. The insurance company has not responded to my emails or the repair vendor emails since the beginning of June. I got with Keith Elteri yesterday, our insurance company, and he made a recommendation to me that the council approve the $19,681.15 to fix the streetsweeper and get it moving so we can get it back. And then, once that happens, then we go back to him, through the insurance company, to pick up the difference and get reimbursed by them. Otherwise, it's just sitting down there, and the parts haven't even been ordered, and it's been down there since the beginning of June. So I need to know what you guys want to do. I recommend we just pay the money and get that thing moving and get it fixed and get it back. Otherwise, it's just sitting there.
Well, I think Mark ought to send it later on to me.
I CC'd Mark on the email, he just hasn't seen it yet, but I did CC Mark on it, so he has the information if he wants to do that.
Yeah, I'll get something together.
You guys, we can wait till next council meeting, but until then, they can't.
No, I agree with you for getting it done, but I think we need to start shoes again.
Oh, no, I agree. And that's why I CC'd Mark. I'm 100% with you, Eddie, on that. That's why I got him in the loop on this now.
We already started looking for another insurance company for a VFW.
We already got rid of them. One July, they are no longer an insurance company. We voted the last meeting for Selective.
Oh, yeah, that's probably why.
It could be a piece of it, because we got an insurance company that, from Keith Elteri, we put it out for bid, and they are better and cheaper. Selective is who we voted on for one July as our new insurance company.
The old insurance company is the one that says $17,000 is yours. So if we pay it, what's the incentive for them to turn around and say, "Okay, yeah, we'll take care of it," versus, "Hey, you paid for it, we're done, come on."
It's a good point, but Keith told me legally they have to do it.
Yeah, we would sue them and allege bad faith and, you know, make sure we got attorney's fees and...
Yeah, I was going to get Streetsweeper with Bill.
Correct, they can't even order the parts. They will not even order the parts until... We can tell them to order, like the borough says, "Go ahead and order those $17,000 parts." But the other big parts, Streetsweeper's no good without that other part, those other parts, $3,000-some dollars. So it's not even, it's going to be, they all have to be ordered. And like I said, I talked to Keith about it yesterday, got the insurance company's recommendation. He said, "I recommend you just pay for it all and then go back and seek restitution through the insurance company, and they'll help us do that."
If we do that, what's the estimate to get Streetsweeper back on the streets?
The cost is $19,681.15.
Yeah, but what's the timeframe?
Oh, timeframe? Well, that's a good question, because back at the beginning of June, they said if we got the stuff on order when they sent us those estimates, it was August. Now we're in the middle of July, so it might be September. I'd like to get it back in time, at least do some of the streets once or twice before the end of the year, because I get people complaining to me all the time about the streets, but, you know, the Streetsweeper.
They are complaining, you're hearing complaints.
Oh, yeah. I talked to a guy yesterday complaining to me about it.
I make a motion, we pay to have it put down, it hasn't worked. Handle with it.
Legal side? Yep.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Fire convention is still on track. The fire convention parade is what you guys approved of the consent agenda. It's already been approved through PANDOT. You guys just approved it. That's on the 12th. Larry, I'm sorry, Larry Carter's here, if you want to hear an update on it. He's here to speak on that. Go ahead, Larry, if you've got something.
Good evening, men. Like Kim said, everything's finalized, everything's ready to go. We finished up the i's and t's yesterday. Everything's ready to go, everything's done. State approved the streets for the parade. It's going to come up Main Street, make a left on Water, up Wayne, down Market, and make them right on Dorcas, as we're red. It's not called Grand Parade for nothing. As of right now, I have 86 pieces registered for the parade, and they're still coming in. I have 78 campers so far, they're still coming in.
Now, on that piece there, I went with Ben today and his guys yesterday, and I think next week, they're going to start the process of preparing the field down there, including trimming all the low branches off, removing the fence and that kind of stuff to get ready for the campers.
Okay. Reached out to Senator Ward and Representative Benningoff for Thursday night's President's Dinner. They're going to get back to me. As of right now, the people I talked to, their associates, whoever they are, they have nothing scheduled, so it sounds like I may have them both for the dinner Friday night, or Thursday night, excuse me. Our grand marshals are going to be none other than Kim and Jim. Thank you. Fire police are willing to help us. They're going to come down and police the area. They're not going to do it all night long, but I have other people that's going to do that. The noise is done at 10 o'clock. As they were told, after 10, there's no noise. If I get a complaint, I'll call the police department, we'll deal with it from there. As long as they're down in the park, they're fine. They were told once they come up out of the park, it's fair game. Nothing I could do about that. It's an ordinance, it's a borough law, it's everywhere. I have 10 vendors, and I just got a phone call for two more today, so we're pretty much ready to go, and I hope it's going to be a good weekend and profitable weekend. The businesses are going to make out, the restaurants are going to make out. Any questions?
I saw where the Chamber Center broadcasts.
Yes.
Have all the restaurants maybe get extra help and order extra food and be prepared for, I guess, the three events.
Yes.
Two in July and one in ours in August.
And you want to talk how you're doing the coverage for the fire.
Oh, for Saturday, Harry's Fire Department will be out of service, because we're going to be busy with the parade. So I have Huntington Regional 65 from coming down. Pat Shute's got a company coming up from Maryland, so we will be covered in the borough. I don't know, is the city going out of service too much, that you know of, or?
I don't think we'll be out of service.
Okay, so we'll have enough coverage for everybody. We're not going to have to worry about lack of fire protection. The Sentinel is doing a paper article. Joan, I met with them Monday. It should be in the paper probably tomorrow or Friday to let everybody know an update, a schedule and everything.
I wonder what time the parade is on the 12th.
Parade is 5:00, Saturday.
That's the 12th, right?
We'll take care of you, we'll give you hamburgers and hot dogs.
Otherwise, if there's anything else you need from us, let me know, and we'll try to help you any way we can. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Parker.
Parking Authority proposal, FYI for council, they have not done anything yet. I had John Panito call me yesterday and said that he's been really busy, he hasn't touched anything with the parking authority at all, neither has Mike Buffington, so they don't have anything new as far as any future plans, what they talked about. John's biggest issue is he doesn't want to see the parking meters be removed off Market Street, which I told the council, we're going to be talking about this stuff right now, because we're trying to figure out what you're going to do with the parking authority, because they thought they had plans, what they were going to do to move ahead to help us with the meters. So FYI, at this time, there's no movement with the parking authority. I'd say give it another month, because it's not hurting us right now. Give it another month, and I think we should talk about disbanding and this possibility. I don't know, it's up to you guys.
I don't want to do the transport, man, anyway.
What's that?
No, it runs, there would be no sense, what a minute, then, anyway.
Yeah, the parking meter, we talked about these numerous times, they're expensive. I mean, even if you did want, if you wanted to do Market Street, it's still $50,000, it's a lot of money, even just doing Market Street. I can't remember what it was, but if you remember, it was like $50,000 or... Because it was actually $100, because the parking authority's going to cover half for their parking lots, and then we had to cover the other half for Market Street. And that was the initial assessment of just around the square and down on the east side, not even the west side. So if you guys decide to move forward that in the future, you're still talking $100,000 to put meters on Market Street. That doesn't include all the other parts of town. Hold off on that for now. September 20th is United Way Day of Caring. I know that's in the works for numerous entities inside the borough, including us. So that will be happening on September 20th. State Liquid Fuels Audit, they audited us today for our, I think it was 2022, beginning of 2023, and kudos to Summer, because she had everything down to the penny. It was a perfect audit, so it came out perfect. Thanks, Summer. Digestor DCD ARCA grant, they are meeting on the 18th. That's still the timeline that they're meeting, and then we'll find out after that whether we get the grant to fix the digester to move forward with that project. So we've been waiting on that since last fall, I think it was, so this is coming down to the end now. Wastewater Municipal Intermunicipal Agreement Review, so I've read that thing several times. They're going to be meeting on the 25th to meet with the intermunicipal people, which is basically Dairy Township, Granville, and us, to discuss that 1982 agreement and some concerns in there as far as, you know, the EDUs and how they calculate them, et cetera, and how it affects the borough and stuff now. So that's still in the works, and meetings are coming up for that. If any, any questions on this stuff here, that would turn it over to, I guess, you.
Or the fire chief.
Okay, thank you. Glad to see you back, Mr. Seer.
Thank you.
Okay. For the month of June, Fire Department ran 21 alarms. Four fires, two vehicle fires, four medical assists, and I'd like to take a second there. One of the fire crews, well, the city, they was already out on the public service, and they were close by when this cardiac arrest came in. They made a quick response. The person was in full cardiac arrest, they initiated CPR, and they've been credited for saving this guy's life, if you still know that. So I want to thank them very much for that. Also, we had five motor vehicle accidents with injuries, one natural gas leak this time, we're down to one, so that's getting better. We had a cover assignment, which we stood by for another out-of-town company. We had a odor scare of smoke, and we had one on Manicamora. Also, I want to touch on yesterday for a minute. Yesterday morning at 8:32, we dispatched a Shaw Avenue, a broken house fire. It was residential fire, double house. When we arrived, we had heavy smoke coming out front, fire coming out on the side and rear. City's engine rescue was pretty quick on the scene. They made a good knockdown. They went through the walkway between that house and the adjoining house, made a quick exterior knockdown to keep from spreading next door and going up the street. The other crews of one arrived, well, they went inside, took care of the fire inside. The one half has major damage, the other part, I would say moderate smoke, a water damage. I called for Kate and the com- we notified the Red Cross. They came in, and I believe they found shelter for 11 residents. Like I said, Kate was the one that seen, she worked with the Red Cross to get them people, well, place them in their homes and whatever. Also, we had two injuries in that call, not from the Fire Department, but two of the residents were treated for smoke inhalation. Okay?
Hey, Bob, can you give me the, I'll talk to you afterwards, the name of the person, the firefighters that saved the gentleman's life?
I'll get that for you. I'll have it for you tomorrow, I'll get you the whole picture.
I'll get it, thanks.
All right.
Okay, first of all, I had a gentleman contact me who lives in the smaller brick homes along Kish Street that butts Green Avenue. He's complaining about mostly it's the Crenshaw's trucks coming down Green Avenue and approaching the four-way stop there with, between Kish and Green Avenue, that they're using jake brakes. And he said that he actually approached one of the drivers, and that didn't go well. He was wondering if there's any possible chance we can put a sign up like we have on a lot of our other gateways coming into the borough to stop that. He said he finds us mostly that, but sometimes there's another truck that comes down, but it's mostly coming from Crenshaw's junkyard. So is that something that we could possibly do, do you think? Because we have them, and the jake brake signs are in most of the gateways coming into the borough, so...
The only, I've done this before. The only thing with jake brakes and coming into the borough, that's a PANDOT regulation, because if the slope of the road is at a certain angle, you can prohibit them from using that. So what I need is the specifics, I'll get with you afterwards. I need the specifics of the street and all that stuff, so I can take a look at it.
Okay, if it's a slope, because that is a slope coming down.
That's why they need the jake brakes, yeah. So I'll have to come, I'll have to get the specifics from you and see if I can do something.
Okay, and sometimes, he says, when they're coming off of Charles Street and going up Kish Street, that would be a slope there, maybe we could have it down there. Kish Street, is that, that's our street, isn't it? I know Green Avenue's...
Green Avenue's PANDOT.
PANDOT, but isn't Kish Street ours?
Probably, yes.
I think.
They wouldn't need their jake brakes on Kish Street, though, I think.
So maybe if it was placed on the Kish Street side.
I don't think they would need them.
Well, they seem to think, he seemed to think...
Coming down, for sure.
Well, coming for sure, but he says when they come off of the, you know, off of Charles Street, you know, they're doing it there, too, for some reason.
Yeah, I'll get this, dispatch them if they fix them.
I can imagine, hey, but come on, they could do it that fast, and they'd even need a jake brake there.
Well, I know, but, you know.
Going Charles Street.
But he says definitely an issue down there, and some of his neighbors are complaining about it, too. So I said, "Well, I'll bring it to council and see if anything can be done." But also, Juniata River Valley Chamber and Visitor Center, every month have an after-hours event at different businesses, and last month, they were at New Vision. They're at a new location there where the Kreider Mitchell Construction had their business. And it's amazing, if you ever get a chance to go down and see, these are all legally and totally blind people who are making the products that they're selling. And they had a whole display of these new items that they're able to make through these new machines, that they've been able to house down since they've gotten a larger area. And it's absolutely amazing to see what these people are making. I mean, they have one gentleman there who's totally blind, he's been there for 30 years, and he sews on a machine, and they set the material down beside him, he brings it over and sews it, sews it the whole way around, has no sight whatsoever. And I don't think he's pinched his finger once, I heard. I don't know if that's true, but that's what I heard. But it is, if you ever get a chance to go down there, it's worth, and the facility itself is absolutely beautiful. They left, Steve Mitchell left all the furniture there, all the furnishings for them, and it's a beautiful, beautiful facility. And then they had the two larger outbuildings that they actually do their manufacturing through, so kudos to them. I mean, it's a great, and we use them for custodian here in our Borough Hall. So I think it's, we should support them. So if you ever get a chance and want to see what they can do, you know, go down, please. Any questions about anything? Thank you.
Post you, Dave?
Okay, statistics for June, we had 527 calls for service, 31 traffic citations, 22 non-traffic, and 83 warnings issued. Drug report for this month, we had three, or five active investigations, three new investigations, two felony arrests, one misdemeanor arrest, four search warrants, seized approximately five grams of methamphetamine and a gram of marijuana edibles. Also, been using our undercover narcotics officer, been doing a lot of surveillance and helping out with other things, such as locating people that are wanted on warrants and things like that. He's able to go out and do some undercover surveillance, so he's been doing a lot of that as well. So continuing to work. As far as the grant, we have an update on that. We've begun the process of transitioning to our new RMS system, and projected go-live date for that is November the 9th, so we've been having weekly implementation meetings, and we'll be starting training for the officers in September, but we're hoping to go live with that in November. National Night Out scheduled for August 1st, it'll be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. in Kish Park. Again, it's a combined event for all Mifflin County Police, first responders, a lot of other agencies and groups involved. A lot of activities for the kids, demonstrations, different things are planned for that, so everyone's welcome to attend that, if you have a chance to get out there. I think we have to add, do you want to add, do that now, the SRO contract?
We can, it's up to you, we can do that. I got to add it, it's renewed, finish, we can do it now, while you've got the floor.
It's up to you.
Yeah, so we have, so we have a new SRO contract that has to be renewed this year. It wasn't on the agenda, but we have it now, so we need to vote to discuss the new SRO contract.
Make a motion, we accept that, or we...
Discuss it.
All in favor, say aye.
Okay, so the contract, no, you're fine. The contract is the same, the only thing that changes on it is they want the police officers from six hours a day to eight hours a day. That's it. They still pay for everything they paid for before, it doesn't change any money for us or anything.
Make a motion, we accept the contract.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I have it on here if you need to see it, but that was the change, the six to eight hours.
That's all I have then, for now. I did a couple of meetings for executive session.
Chief, when you were talking about the National, or the Night Out, I've had some interest in my neighborhood about a watch, neighborhood watch program. Who would they contact in order to set that on? Would that be through the mayor's office?
They would contact the department, contact me or one of the other supervisors, we can...
The department, okay.
Yeah, just contact us.
Okay.
Good thing.
Thank you. Yeah, we need it, especially with the people that have been down along the tow path, the little groupings. Had a lot of difficulty with them, so...
Yeah, we're aware of that, and wouldn't tell the officers to keep an eye on that, so...
Yeah, they were on there, wow.
Yeah, my understanding is there are two camps, two encampments of them down there along the tow path.
Yeah, I know they've been seen down there.
I drove it today with Ben, not because of what you're talking about, just because periodically we drive and looking for trash, see if there's issues, that kind of stuff. I didn't see anybody down there. Not that they're not, but right today, they weren't down there, so... Yeah, staying is Recreation.
Recreation Board?
The Recreation Board was last night, but it was canceled because it was at the same time as the Fire Committee meeting. Fire Committee meeting had precedence because of the ARCA purchases, because of the discussion of law and ordinance for Chapter 24, and because the fire convention was coming up. So I contacted the REC Board, the next REC Board meeting is one August. Basically, I did give them an update of all the REC Board, the pool, the pool study, which I talked about with you, victory park steps, you know, they've been removed, et cetera, et cetera.
That's National Night Out.
Yeah, what?
That's National Night Out.
Oh, yeah. That's all I have for the REC Board. Mark?
The Planning Commission got an application from the VFW, the parcel down there at the end of Market Street, to do a lot consolidation. They reviewed everything, they reviewed the county comments, and they are recommending that council approve the plan. It's very... It's very straightforward, so.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Let's do new unfinished business. First thing is a handicap parking spot on Pannebaker Avenue that Heavy was asked about earlier. The gentleman did request it. He doesn't have a placard yet, it is requested, they just don't have it yet. I have pictures of it, and Heavy hit it down the head, so. Heavy's on it, done. Handicap parking, so 148 Pannebaker. So on this picture, you can see there's two spots, there's this one and this one. He wants a spot, I believe, right here, is the third spot. There's also one up the street here, there's also one across the street. So they want it in front of this house, which is 148, I think this is from here, so they want it right here. Because that's a handicap, that's handicap. So that's handicap, that's handicap, they want it right here. So it'd be three handicap spots in a row. His wife has to be carried, I mean, she has to be carried from the car, as it is. He was the one talking about the street with the rocks and stuff, not having streets for people because it's easy for them to slip on the gravel and stuff there in front of the house, so. Bottom line is that he does want one there, he hasn't paid the fee yet, but if you want to approve it, you can approve it pending payment of the fee and receipt of the placard.
Are the other ones being used?
Yes, they are, they're being used. They both have placards, I verified it myself. I always go make sure there's placards there and they're both being used. But this is what generated the concept with Ben of re-inventoring all our handicap spots in town, because they keep growing number-wise, but yet, I may not be rude, but people die, people move, whatever, so they may not be needed in that spot anymore, but yet we're not taking them out. So on our end, we're also double checking it on that end, and in this one here, you know, we're still going to go through the process if people want one, so it's up to you guys.
I think we should do it through it. Pending.
Pending, pending receipt of payment and the placard.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
And Floyd, handbook I'm holding off on, it'll be ready definitely by August, there's some, there are a couple minor things in there that, that we need to make changes on, that I talked to Summer about and I agree with her on as far as the TDYs and things like that. But for the most part, it's 99% done, I just want to hold off till we get exactly right for August. This is not holding us off on anything because we already have the contracts in place and they take precedence over the handbook. Now, the cost of fee schedule, that we want to get approved and make it effective one August. That has been done, this has been bare, but it has been gone through with the leadership here, it's been sent out to council, a lot of the stuff we've already talked about. I went through and updated the dates, let me make this smaller. This stuff we can't change because that's from the state, the codes, can't change any of that stuff. That's, that's set by the state, so nothing we can do there. This is stuff we talked about, disinspection permits and stuff, you can see some of the stuff we did at the end of the year last year, so it's still effective, we're not changing that.
But the final clause on the community camp park.
Oh, we did, we did, let me see if I can find the handicap.
West State.
It was, yeah, it wasn't, we, we, let me find it. Special purpose, that's matter, you see it?
Parking space application.
I heard they're 50.
Twenty to fifty.
Forty-five to fifty. Because it costs us five, it costs us 500 bucks per spot.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is to make this effective one August. Now theoretically, you probably make it effective one January if you want, but we've been kind of pushing this off. I recommend we just make it effective one August.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion, we do it effective September 1st. Give everybody a month, give everybody a month to, or two to get yourself down.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Pool Community Day, I've seen a lot of comments on Facebook about the pool and, you know, the fees and stuff like that, which I think are very fair, it's six bucks, but our pool is probably going to close either the 5th or the 6th of August, because it is closed the following week for the fireman's convention, they'll be using the bathrooms, all that kind of stuff. And this year, the challenge is all the lifeguards are not all high school kids, so last year they could stay through Labor Day weekend and work. But this year, five of them are going to college, and now some of them are old enough to be in, in football and some other cheerleading and some other stuff, that they have practices and stuff. So they're trying to work a schedule out, if they have enough lifeguards, to keep it open through the rest of August, based on the number of lifeguards they have. But I was going to recommend to council to have a pool community day like the 5th or 6th of August, where it's free for anybody to come down and swim that day. And we just start at noon and go till whenever they close at the end of the day. It's just free for anybody who wants to come down and swim.
Good.
If we tell the people when they buy their yearly membership that they may close that early.
Yeah, they, well, I don't know, we didn't know that.
I don't think we advertised any closing, we didn't advertise any closing days.
No, no closing days. I'd like to keep it open all the way through Labor Day again, the problem is.
I'd say, well, you know.
That could be a problem.
I certainly be upset if the big pool closed on the 5th and I bought a yearly membership down there and not being told that. I think you're going to have a lot of complaints.
The other problem we have, Larry, is people that have paid for those banners, I'm sure they expected advertisement through September.
I would think so, I mean, you know.
Are we going to refund some of their advertising fees? Or are they just out?
Maybe we can keep it open.
Well, that's what we're hoping. There, I talked to Conley about it today, they're still trying to run through lifeguards and find out.
I certainly think that's going to be, that's going to be a bad idea, I don't know if I'm going to ask them.
Yeah, I agree with you.
We run into this about every year, though, they promise us we'll be right up through the beginning of September, and then August, well, we're done.
No, last year we went through Labor Day weekend. Last year we did go through Labor Day weekend.
Well, last year it was, it was before Labor Day, but it was pretty close to the end of the month. I mean, I, I don't think it'd get a lot of flack if we closed it all, August 30th, but.
The kids will be going back to school.
I mean, most, most pools always close Labor, you know.
I mean, one of the options we are looking at is not having the whole pool open. Say we only have three or four lifeguards and we close half the pool, and then we have the three lifeguards to cover the rest, because state law requires us to have so many lifeguard guards for so many square feet, we can't get around.
Yeah, I understand, I know that.
Nobody wants to close it, Heavy, trust me. They're, they're trying, they're working hard down there trying to get the kids, in fact, we just hired another lifeguard Monday to make up for it.
Well, not much we do with, I mean, lifeguard. Yeah, I'm just saying, that could wish, that should be taken care of.
How? I mean, no offense, but how would we take care of it?
Well, I mean, you try and hire, if you hire lifeguards, and you tell them that you want, you want them there till September 3rd, or whatever day Labor Day is, you know, or even to the end of August, August 30th, et cetera. And they say, well, I can't do it. Well, then you hunt for another lifeguard. I mean, what if you hire someone here and they say, well, I don't even want to work for you, Mike? You know?
I agree.
If you, if you can't, if you can't get it filled, then you shouldn't open it. That's my philosophy.
I think we're talking about, about a pool community day? Going to be in favor of that, or is it?
Yeah, I know, I get it, Heavy, trying to get them to stay in.
I'd be in favor of the pool community day, I think it's a good way to get by.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about now, is pool community day.
I have no objection to that.
It starts on.
27th.
27th.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
When did, hey Matt, do you know when football starts? Football, sports, the practices and stuff start, the government starts?
I'll give it, 5th I think, or whatever that first Monday is they're allowed to start.
On the community pool day, we need to vote, because it's going to be free for anybody who wants to come down and swim.
Up until school starts.
Anybody want to approve it?
May 5th, we'll probably do it, we'll do it for August, us.
Yeah, I know, I agree.
What's the Saturday?
Saturday's the 5th.
Saturday's the 5th. You can do it Saturday or Sunday, you can do it both, make it community pool weekend, I don't, it's whatever you guys want to do. I think it's giving back to the community, because a lot of people say they can't afford to swim because of the six bucks. You can do it 5th and 6th, it's up to you. 5th, the 5th is a Saturday, 6th is a Sunday, so you can pick one or the other, do it for the whole weekend, a community weekend down there before the fire convention starts.
I think that'd be a very nice gesture for the community.
Sure. I need a motion, or a second?
A second, sorry.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I just need, would we just approve?
What did we approve?
The community day.
Which day, both days?
The 5th, it was 6th, or both days? That's what I need to know, because you get advertising stuff.
I don't have a problem with both days. I don't know about how everybody.
Community weekend, you know.
I thought it was about two days.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with both days.
That'd be nice.
Community days, 5th and 6th, before the fire convention. All right, that is approved. So County Liquid Fuel Tax Funds Form 339, our sheriff in the county is $7,340, and there's a form here that, that's in front of Jim that he has to sign. Basically, it's, it's us requesting the county to encumber the money until we use it next year or the year after. So I just need approval to do that. We do this every year.
So moves.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Planning Commission Board Member Lisa Knutson submitted a application to be on the Planning Commission Board. Just need the council's approval for that, if they want to accept her application. And I have it here, it's in Planning Commission.
I need a motion?
Motion.
Second? Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Two things we have to vote on to discuss. The first thing is the Blacks Hospital change on the plan, and Lucas is here to talk you through that, but we have to have the vote to discuss that before we can, because it's not on the agenda.
Make a motion, we discuss it.
Second. All in favor, aye. Aye. Lower, Jerry's Lucas?
Yep, thank you, folks. You guys approved the subdivision for Blacks Hospital a couple months ago for three building lots. They went through the sale, and in the process of writing the deeds, we realized that one property line, a couple corner pins on our plan were out of alignment when we did the deeds with the neighboring properties. So in order to clean everything up for the proper transfer and sale of those properties, we have adjusted that lot line. We're talking 12 inches in some spots, but it does impact, you know, we were trying to figure out if we could just proceed, but we felt since you guys had a council meeting tonight, we can get this through. So really, we're just formally asking you guys to approve the revised plans. We're going to plot them off and bring them in and just get them re-signed and re-recorded at the courthouse, so it's, it's really just the formality of making sure we match up with those corner pins.
Should move.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
They sell all those apartments, apartments?
They did.
Did all three of them?
Yes.
Great.
Yep, I believe one person bought lot number one, which was on the well-known corner, and then the same person bought lot two and lot three up on top. And I think they are going to build a house. Yep. While I have the floor, just want to give you guys a brief update. On the south side paving project down, down towards Green Gables, all the ADA ramps have been installed. We did a walkthrough and everything looked good there. Caitlin and Rex are working with a few more property owners to finish up their sidewalk, and we're going to issue the notice of proceed to Hall Baker's to do the paving here within the month. So that's all moving forward and get, I'll, I'll finish out six or seven blocks down there and wrap that whole end of town up.
Excellent.
Yep. All right, well, thank you, guys. Yep, have a good evening.
You too.
The last thing is, I request, right before the meeting, I received a request for a handicap parking spot. And again, we got to vote to discuss it because it involves money and personnel, because they got to pay the fee for it. So they did pay the fee, so we have to vote to discuss it.
So moves.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
All right, this gentleman submitted it, paid for it, he's got some medical issues, which, I mean, they all do, he's got the placard and stuff, but here's the problem, here's this, here's the apartment he stays in, this is on Valley Street. I mean, this won't be done for a long time.
Two years, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, not denying the request or anything, but, where's he got the picture out on here? Here's the back, so I guess he's parking in the back now, so there is parking back here, because you know he ain't parking up front.
So he can all wait for it.
Yeah, so, so if you want to approve it, because it's a long ways actually from the front of the building up, up this street to the back here by barriers, you could approve it pending completion of Valley Street. Because we can't do anything right now, but you can approve it pending completion of Valley Street. And I can't tell you if there's other handicap spars, spots by it now, because it's all in construction, so just the best I can do.
We're going to have to watch where they put that in, because that, part of that's enough parking done.
Yep, no, you're absolutely right, Heavy. Absolutely right. So you, you can do that pending completion of Valley Street, or we postpone it, because even to be honest with you, you can't put one in now, even if you approve it.
Well, I'd say we approve it now and he'll get, he'll get the price it is now to my butt.
Correct, correct, yep.
But, but it won't, it won't be put in.
It won't be put in until pending completion of Valley Street.
Yeah.
Or feasible.
Yeah, because he might not be happy where he has to put that.
No, you're right, you're absolutely right. Motion?
I'll make a motion, we'll prove it.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Vote.
And this will be approved pending completion of Valley Street. Okay. That was the last thing I had, Mr. President. We have executive session after this.
All right, we're going to have a executive session now.